Good evening, everyone. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance if you would, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the republic, the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We'll have a moment's silence before we start the meeting. Thank you. I'll call a meeting order. Have approval of the minutes of the May 7 city council meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Debbie. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Financial report? Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Are these things that were ordered for Oldham County Day or something? Please?
Yes.
That's really the only question I had.
Came out of bus advertising.
Yeah, that's for the bus.
That's for bus?
Yeah.
It came out of bus advertising money.
The bus is going to have a booth.
They're not going to be with the city's booth?
Yeah, you just said that they're going to be with the city booth.
Okay, okay. So they're actually for the city to pass out, though?
Yes.
Sure.
I make a motion, we accept the financial report.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Jean. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to the mayor's open remarks. I'm going to give my budget message in the open remarks for fiscal year 2018-2019. The budget is revenue and expenditure goals for the upcoming fiscal year that include administration, special appropriations, public works, and police department. There are separate budgets for municipal road aid, city bus, alcohol regulatory fees, and stormwater MS4. There was a significant change in revenue mainly for property tax, business license compensation tax, which allowed us to change our program, goals, and appropriation levels from the previous year. These include adding 344,000 to debt service designated to debt service. The other two appropriations that were increased were sidewalks increased by 50,000 and paving by 60,000. The city is staying financially strong and made it possible to restructure debt on our general obligation. And because of that, as of May the 8th, proud to announce that Moody Investors Service upgraded our credit rating from BAA2 to A2, which reflects a material improvement in the city's financial position. That's three notches up. That's something for us to be proud of. We've come a long ways. This improvement shows what can happen by us all working together for the common goal of improving the quality of life of our citizens and moving our city forward. I'd like to thank all the staff, city council, all the departments, police department, public works department, LaGrange Utilities. We're all working together and it's making the city run real smooth, so I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution 3-2018. Steve, if you would, please.
Thank you. Resolution number 3, 2018, a resolution of the city council of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky relating to the issuance by the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority of revenue bonds in order to refinance, among other things, costs incurred by Baptist Healthcare System, Inc. in constructing and acquiring certain hospital facilities in the city. Whereas Baptist Healthcare System, Inc., Baptist Health, a Kentucky nonprofit corporation, desires to refinance the costs of previous improvements to certain hospital, healthcare, and health-related facilities currently constituting Baptist Health, LaGrange, and the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, the city, including without limitation the prior acquisition, construction, or renovation of land and land improvements, hospital facilities, facility safety systems, laboratory facilities, HVAC equipment, emergency and patient room improvements, and medical and office equipment and furnishings, collectively the existing projects, up to $57 million, of the costs of which are presently expected to be refinanced by the bonds hereinafter defined. And whereas it is expected that the refinancing of the existing projects by Baptist Health will have a positive impact on the local economy and the delivery of hospital, healthcare, and health-related services to the citizens of the city and the surrounding areas, and in particular will result in provision of more efficient and effective hospital, healthcare, and health-related services in the area. And whereas the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority, KEDFA, a body politic and corporate within the Economic Development Cabinet of the Commonwealth of Kentucky created in existing pursuant to the provisions of KRS Chapter 154, possesses the legal authority to authorize and issue revenue bonds to provide for the refinancing of the existing projects upon the request of the city as required by KRS 103.2101. And whereas such refinancing, when undertaken by KEDFA, will enable Baptist Health to continue to provide substantial employment for residents of the area. And whereas the city, for the reasons above stated, desires to renew its request for the issuance of such revenue bonds by KEDFA, the bonds, for the purpose of refinancing costs of the existing projects and refinancing the costs of other projects for other hospitals, healthcare, and health-related facilities owned or operated by Baptist Health in other Kentucky cities. And it is appropriate that this resolution be adopted in order to evidence such request. Now therefore, excuse me, be it resolved in order by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, acting by and through its city council as follows. Section 1, it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the statements of facts set forth in the preamble of this resolution are true and accurate in all respects, and the preamble and all the recitals therein are incorporated in this resolution by reference as if set forth verbatim herein. Section 2, the city hereby requests the issuance of the bonds by KEDFA in order to refinance the existing projects for Baptist Health. Such request is made solely for the purpose of satisfying the statutory requirement of KEDFA for such local request and shall not be deemed to constitute an approval of the existing projects for any other municipal purpose of the city. Section 3, the adoption of this resolution shall not be deemed to and shall not constitute an approval of the bonds or any representation made by KEDFA or Baptist Health in the issuance thereof, and shall not impose any liability or responsibility, financial or otherwise, upon the city. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption, adopted by the city council of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky on June 4, 2018, signed by the mayor, attested by the city clerk, and declared to be in full force and effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. This is something we do every year. Like it says in the resolutions, no liability to the city. We just have to pass this for the Baptist Healthcare. So is there any questions on the resolution? Not all ask for a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 3-2018.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Jean. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Resolution 3, 2018. Thank you. Yes, would you all like to come forward and say anything for us? Yeah, we appreciate it.
I'm Mark Franklin. I'm counsel for Baptist Health. I'm with Stahl, Keenan Ogden in Louisville, and we assist Baptist Health with the Spahn financings. This is Nathan Wilson.
And I'm the vice president chief nursing officer of Baptist Health of LaGrange. So thank you so much for your consideration this evening.
Fantastic, nice. Appreciate you all coming. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for the great facility. Public comment? Anyone want to come forward for a public comment? Going forward, we'll go back to LaGrange utility report. Y'all have your report in the packet for us. Any questions? No questions? I think their financials are still looking great. LaGrange Main Street, Karen? Big crowd this weekend, I suppose, look like?
Yes, I don't have numbers yet, but it was busy both Saturday and Sunday. It was great. People seemed happy. The artists seemed happy. Merchants seemed happy. So that's good. And they're already planning for next year already.
When they're happy, I'm happy.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't hear of anything that we need to be afraid of.
Great.
Okay, I gave you my report, so you can call me if you have any questions on that. What happens is I just wanted to, one, talk about arts on the green, but also remind you the farmer's market is back this weekend. But in the, trying to build up each of the events, instead of having so many, maybe build them up on the day, Saturday's going to be very busy with the farmer's market. And then you're going to have Open Knit from 9:00 to noon also. And the History Center is going to start a program on Saturdays with the farmer's market from 9:00 to noon where the kids get to come in. This week it happens to be on flags, but they're going to be inside the new barn. So if you've not had an opportunity to walk on that property, it is fantastic and it's beautiful. So make sure and go in there. So Saturday will be very full. We also have the Bluegrass Jams on Monday nights. What I did not include in your report, if you would go to Kentucky Life on KET, we were on, in May, May 27th, we were featured on 27 Minutes. So I don't know, about seven minutes. So if you didn't get to see that, I will send you a link to that also, so you'll be able to watch that. It's, we already had people from Northern Kentucky come because of that. And then today I had gentlemen stop me on the street from Michigan that was here because of the rail cam. So again, we're reaching people in unique ways.
We have some happy rail fans right now since we got the speaker, the mic installed.
Okay.
We did that the 29th.
So I knew that they were here so that we can hear it better. I have not listened to it yet.
Yes, it's, the, the mic, the birds had just, just started, the birds had. And Mike Syre from, you know, from Virtual Rail Fan, he decided when he was putting those virtual rail cams up, that they had to go down through the chimney for, you know, instead of drilling to do it. And he said while we was there, the birds were just flying out everywhere. So he figured it was, that was getting back at him. Because he said he'd never seen that happen before, so.
He hasn't watched out for Hitchcockson, has he?
So, yes, so he, so he put it in a different place up there some way so they, hopefully they can get to it. So, because it's not a, it's kind of expensive move to get that done and rent the scissor lift and, you know, so.
Yes.
Anyway, the, on live chat, the rail fans are happy again.
Well, and if you'll, in the report, and for the public to know, we are up to, the video of LaGrange has been watched equal to 22 years worth of video watching. That was as of the end of March. So we have a lot of people watching us. I think I, I called and I asked about what type of trees, because we had a request from Arizona on what type of trees we had on Main Street. So they're watching it very closely.
They don't miss anything.
No, they don't.
They don't miss a thing.
We'll have trackside tunes June 29th and the quads on June 23rd. Summer has begun. Nice and adventurous.
I was going to go ahead and just give a quick recap, too, on the green space. If you're, I don't want to interrupt you, but if you're finished, I'll go ahead and let them know.
Finished, do you want me to stay up here while you do them?
Yeah, just in case there's questions. So the vision committee met on May 23rd, and it was discussed prior to that with Karen, and mayor was kept informed of this, that the, the park, which we're calling right now the Green Space, that we are wanting to develop around Second and Main Street. It's about a, close to a four acre area. We wanted to create a dedicated committee to move forward with that and to put some folks on that committee that are very familiar with development and how to develop sites. And so after discussing with Stephanie and Shannon, we decided it would be best to move forward with that by having two representatives from council sit on that Green Space Committee. So at the moment, it's myself and Stephanie. After the election, I'll roll off and then somebody else can move into another council position, and hopefully Stephanie will still be on. There's going to be two representatives from the design committee for Main Street, and that is Jeremy Esposito and David Bazanas. And then Nancy Griffin is kind of taking the role as like a citizen project leader on it, because she's so familiar with all the grants and some of the steps that we've taken so far. And Hope Gardner from the park board is also going to be a representative on that board. So there is not a set time when we're going to be meeting, but we will keep everybody informed as best we can as things start to move forward. And if, when we, when we do have meetings, of course, they'll be public and we'll let everybody know. So that's the update on that. Is there anything I missed or you want to add?
Want to say about the conceptual drawings?
Well, that's, so the, our hope is to, I guess, probably by mid to late summer, actually have a design firm put together some conceptual drawings, that we can then have some public meetings to get feedback from the community and give people a visual idea of what we're actually planning. And from that, maybe tweak some of the ideas, move some things around if some suggestions come in that would improve it. And then at that point, we would have to then move forward with actually putting out a request for, it wasn't a request.
It's RFQ.
Request for.
Qualifications, thank you.
Thank you, yes. So that is kind of our next steps, is to pull together a conceptual plan. And once we have those, we will hold some public meetings to get input on that.
The conceptual drawings will be based on what the public hearings have already brought forth.
Yes, in the surveys that we had last fall. So it'll include the, at least the top three design elements that were requested in, from those surveys.
Is this the same area that we've been, the council itself has been talking about, this area, about what we're going to put there, what's going to be allowed to put there?
It's the, where the skate park currently is and the parking lot. Yeah, yes.
And the reason for us to be able to, we're thankful to be able to take a hold of that, because it's going to be an anchor for Main Street. And hopefully, it's, the momentum will be able to be kept up. And now you all can move on to other projects. And this would, this would be one that we would be able to work with you and be able to push it forward a little bit more.
We talked at one time about a pavilion. Has anyone touched base with farmer's market, how they feel about?
They want it, if that's the question.
Over on that, yeah.
They would love to have it. It was, did not make the top three, but obviously that's something that we're still looking at because of the fact that currently, I think, we kind of discussed, if that's okay to say, that we think people didn't vote for it because they thought we were trying to push the farmer's market off. But this is actually a request from the farmer's market, because for instance, this last weekend, they aren't able to have the farmer's market.
That's reasonable, I asked, because I was wondering if, because they could have probably had it if we'd had a pavilion.
And so it will be a three-season
Right.
event space, basically, that will be able to add to things downtown. And on that note, farmer's market, even on for Oldham County Day, they will not be downtown, but they are going to be, or they won't be at the courthouse lawn, but they're going to be down in front of the Welcome Center. They've, there will have some of them set up down there on that end. So that's at least one event that they're able to find other space. Okay, yes? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next, we have introduction or first reading of ordinance 8, 2018. Trey, would you like to introduce that, please?
Yes. Sorry. I will introduce ordinance number 3-2018, an ordinance adopting the city of LaGrange, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year.
Oh, number nine.
I'm sorry. Number eight.
It's not on your list.
Not on my list. Oh, okay. Sorry, caught me off guard there.
You can read it right off of there.
Okay. Introduced the first reading of ordinance 8-2018, an ordinance adopting revisions and updates for certain sections of the existing Oldham County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you.
Got that one.
City of LaGrange, Kentucky ordinance number eight, series 2018, an ordinance adopting revisions and updates for certain sections of the existing Oldham County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Whereas the city of LaGrange has the authority pursuant to the provisions of KRS Chapters 83 and 100 and other applicable Kentucky law to adopt and approve revisions to the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. And whereas Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission and Oldham County Fiscal Court have recommended adoption of certain revisions to the existing Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, C County Ordinance number KOC 16-920-345, and Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of Tuesday, February 27, 2018, and therefore, and now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. One, that the revisions to the Comprehensive Zoning Plan ordinance of the affected sections and divisions, as stated in the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of February 27, 2018, are hereby adopted and approved. The affected sections and divisions are stated in the aforementioned minutes and are attached heretofore as an exhibit, and the language used to replace, amend, or add to the sections and divisions described in that ordinance are fully adopted and approved and incorporated as if set out in its entirety herein. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
So we will have the second reading in public hearing, the next meeting, when it is?
July?
The second?
I agree.
Okay. The second reading, public hearing on that, July the second. Okay. We've got the, next, we have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 3, 2018. Ready, Steve?
Thank you. Commonwealth Kentucky, City of LaGrange, ordinance number 3, 2018, an ordinance adopting the city of LaGrange, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, by estimating funds for operations of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council of LaGrange, Kentucky. And whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and accepted same as presented, now therefore be it ordained by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, ad valorem, 1,300,000. Motor vehicle, 151,000. Delinquent property tax, 75,000. Franchise tax, 264,000. Omitted tangibles, 7,000. Business licenses, 400,000. Garbage commission, 380,000. 10% insurance tax premiums, 1,635,000. Miscellaneous income, 50,000. Penalties, 12,000. Interest income, 2,500. Utility tax, 55,000. Mine and minerals, 7,000. Received cleft, 56,000. Cleft portion retirement, 17,640. House bill 413, 13,000. Discounts, credited, 22,000. Encroachment fees, 5,000. Bank shares, 61,000. Community center, 6,000. Federal overtime, 6,000. Compensation tax, 2,275,000. ABC license fees, 15,000. Liter abatement grant, 4,000. Grand total, 6,775,140. Expenses, administration, 1,056,550 and 40 cents. Special appropriations, 3,46,674 and 94 cents. Police, 1,544,441 and 79 cents. Public works, 1,127,472 and 87 cents. Grand total, 6,775,140 dollars. Section 2, introduced, seconded, and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body held on June 4, 2018, after first reading held on May 7, 2018, signed by the mayor of the city of LaGrange, attested by the city clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law and shall continue until amended or until June 30, 2019, whichever should first occur.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion on ordinance number 3, 2018. We've got to make a motion in a second. We've got to go in public hearing.
Motion.
Then we'll come back at them.
Motion to accept ordinance number 3-2018.
Second. Motion to go into public hearing.
Thank you. Second on a motion for public hearing. All in favor? We're now in public hearing. Anybody want to come forth?
Hello. Hi there. My name's James Watson. I don't know if I need to give my address, you know, I don't know. So I, just a clarification, some of this, the statutes and stuff that dictate these particular, not procedures, but the actions that the council take are somewhat unfamiliar to me at the moment. Correct me if anything I say is incorrect. By statute, the compensation tax with proposed revenues of 2.275 million dollars needs to be dedicated wholly towards the paying down of the Oldham Reserve Debt. needs to be dedicated wholly towards the paying down of the Oldham Reserve debt.
Is by ordinance, Jane.
Okay, and that's, that was my understanding. So, looking at the breakdown for special appropriations, I did not find two point two seven five million dollars in payouts or in putting money away for a rainy day, or however you want to, I do, I don't know the exact details of how the bond payments work.
Everything that's, everything that's concerned in, the compensation tax is under special appropriations.
Sure.
And we have it highlighted.
You, in the document I had, right after the last council meeting, there was nothing highlighted. So, again, I apologize for my ignorance.
But it's all in, it's all in the, uh...
You're telling me that the one point two million dollars sure of the monthly payments, and then there's another one million dollars in stuff that's specifically allowed to be paid by the compensation tax, is that, is that correct? What, can you just give me a couple, I mean, it can't be that many things, you know?
Well, one thing that's coming out of compensation taxes has to do with Oldham Reserve. We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars we've got to do for pond mitigation.
Sure.
So, you know, that type.
Yeah, any, any of that kind of debt.
Any of that comes out of, yeah. The, uh, the payment on Oldham Reserve for the year is one million, two hundred, one million, one-
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, one hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollars a month, sure.
So, yeah.
Again, so that's, that's two.
There's five hun- yeah, we have to pay five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars to-
The county?
They, to the county, yeah, so.
Sure, okay, so now we're at eighteen.
Uh, I hadn't figured it out, but it should be.
I was looking through it and I just, even if I was making the most generous of assumptions, I could not equate two point two seven five million dollars, and that-
There's also three hundred, forty-four thousand, nine hundred in debt service. Now, maybe all of it or some of it will go towards the call on the bond in February of two thousand nineteen. How much exactly, I don't know that until February.
The bonds haven't matured enough for us to make a
Again, and-
a balloon payment.
And sure, I understand that completely, that, again, by the, the, whatever the agreement was between us and the issuing, issuance of the bond, it doesn't allow those overpayments as time progresses and as we see fit. But I just want to make sure that that money is being put aside for those appropriate times.
It's in a spa, uh-
But I don't see any special line items on here like, two, you know, two hundred thousand dollar deposit to this special account. And I, again, I just, I want to see, I want to see Oldham Reserve get paid off so that we are freed up to do more things.
You're not the only one.
I, I understand that, I understand.
Your projections are the card, Jane.
Sure, and I'm just, but I look at the numbers and I just didn't, I can't, I don't have the numbers in front of me where I would specifically ask for special references to add up.
When I add all the numbers up, I get two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
That we are, that's highlighted.
There were some adjustments since the last meeting on the worksheet to make sure that the compensation tax was at least, um, part of that debt service. But to Stephanie's point, you know, since it's over, what we expect is revenue, um-
Yeah, that's good, I mean, if we, if we're in a position to pay down the debt even further, why wouldn't we should? But, okay, so if, if there have been adjustments to the worksheet since I've received the worksheets, then, then I- Okay, so, alright, so as long as we're all on the same page, then-
We are.
There, okay.
I can give you a copy of the adjustments.
Yeah, that, that'd be great, again, I, I trust you, I just, I couldn't, and I, I asked these questions of the Budget Committee members and they were unable. At the time, they weren't prepared when I called them, I understand that completely, um, but I just, I couldn't make left equal right, and, and-
It's there.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, alright, well, thank you.
And the compensation's in a, a special account, we don't, you know, it's strictly for-
And I understand, and this, you know, again, this is-
In time you need those figures, you're welcome to, Jane.
I appreciate it, alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now at a public hearing, we have, uh, questions, comments by the council, discussion?
Yeah, I have questions. Uh, I did notice that you changed, uh, six different items amounts. And yet you got the same, where I had confused was the subtotal is the same amount, and then you changed the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. But the subtotal is still-
Which one are you talking about, Jean?
This, special appropriations.
Special appropriations?
Some things went down, some things went up.
I know, but you changed them. What went down, I didn't see anything that went down.
Yeah, uh-
Main Street went down, green space went down.
Building maintenance.
Uh, building maintenance went down.
Mayor's discretionary fund went down. It cut it in half.
I'm just talking about special appropriations, is that wrong there?
That's where I'm-
Yes.
I saw that, one, I minus two, you had one, two, three that went down, and you had one, two, three that went up considerably more than what went down. What I, what I don't understand is how you got the same figure.
Because we just changed the-
You just moved money around.
Money around in within line items.
I added it, I mean, it's, I don't have to get it, but, have I put the same amount when you had two hundred and eighty-nine, eight hundred that you didn't have on there earlier? And the minuses were only, let's see, they were five, nineteen thousand, what, twenty-two thousand? About twenty-four thousand, and it went up a whole heck of a lot more than that.
I don't know, we, we run those three times, so it's all, it's, it all balanced out. If you'll, if you'll run them all, it'll still come out to the three thousand, eleven, six seventy-four.
I have the old one and the new. And I went through every one of them, and somehow we got a still, a marked ones that were different. Minus that one, plus that one, minus that one. See, that one's the first one. That one down, there it is, I found it right here. I got that one right there.
This went down.
Yep, I got it right there. And this one's down. Went up forty-four thousand, and this one went up a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-ten.
This, this went down.
This one, I don't have that one.
This went down, a hundred and thirty-three, four hundred and ninety.
This went up, a hundred and thirty-three, four hundred and ninety.
More went down. Originally, you put a hundred and forty-three, four hundred and ninety-ten in building maintenance.
Oh, okay, but, so I added that, because you only had ten. So I added a hundred and thirty-three thousand more on that. That's why I definitely understand how you got the same figure.
But we minused a hundred and ninety.
Sorry, excuse me, call you, honey. Anyway, uh, whatever, I just noticed-
If you add them all up, if you add them all up, Jean, it will exactly come out to three million, eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, ninety-four cents.
I just, I just double checked it, they all add up.
Yeah, we ran them like three times.
There weren't an awful lot of changes.
Right.
And, uh, that was what bothered me more than anything, because I didn't think we could vote if we changed things.
We didn't change the bottom number.
We didn't change the bottom-
Don't change the bottom number, you don't, we don't have to-
Wasn't a major change, wasn't no, it wasn't no change at all, yeah.
Okay.
It didn't change the bottom line at all.
Eight items, but we don't, okay, I understand.
Any more questions?
Do you need to vote on it? Uh, go ahead, I thought I read some, no, actually, we made our own. Several years ago, we made our own, uh, La Grange ordinance, probably in your office. There was any changes that they couldn't be voted on for at least two weeks, but you're saying the bottom line's the same, we changed figures, but we don't have to vote on it.
No, no, no.
Why do I?
It didn't change anything for the second reading. Sure didn't.
Yeah, you changed six items, Joe.
Didn't change-
Not on the ordinance.
I know you're saying the bottom didn't change, but you did change the, the numbers. So there are changes.
Yes, we did, Jean, I'm not arguing that point.
I'm saying, if it's okay, then it's okay.
It's okay.
I'm just saying, there were six items that the amount was changed.
Yes, there was.
And if we can vote on it, we're that way then, bye.
We can.
Have a question.
Yes.
The three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred is gonna, it just says debt service there, that is definitely going to be used for
It's, it's-
debt reduction on the bond.
It's designated for, yes, it's designated for bonds, debt reduction on bonds, yes.
If we're going to do the three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred, and we've got two million, five hundred in surplus, how come we don't take another million of the surplus and, and put it on that bond?
I think we discussed that it could be done, um, but this actually can't even be done until February because that's when we can refinance.
Right.
So then we can decide at that time.
If we don't do it now, we have to, we have to amend the budget?
Well, we'd be-
I don't think it would be an amendment to the budget.
So if we got to amend it, we have to amend it.
We'd take that amount from, a draw of the reserve.
Off the reserve.
I mean, in my opinion, I just think we should pay more on the bond, but that's just my opinion.
I think, well, I know for myself, and I think the other members on the Budget Committee felt the same way, that once, once we get to the point where we can refinance and give a balloon payment, we'll give as much as we can at that time.
And when is that?
It was February.
Another question.
I do want to say, as far as the ordinance committee, we did spend, uh, multiple meetings for multiple hours, um, for multiple months, uh, going over this stuff.
Come to us, and we haven't seen it.
Correct, and that's why we're here tonight, um-
And the, the meetings are announced and they're open.
They're always open.
Well, I believe I was in the hospital, I really couldn't-
Well, um, just to kind of reiterate some of the things we, that Anne just said as well, you know, we really wanted to try to pay down debt service, um, for as, as much as we possibly could, that's, uh, and, and what Tad said as well. So we tried to really comb through the revenue expenditures as well to try to, um, appear to, to pay those debts off as, as soon as possible and get the city in even better standing. So it's, um, I appreciate all the department heads that submitted their budgets. I know we had to rework them a few times, um, just to get everything balanced. Um, and then the, the, um, committee members for their time, uh, it was a lot of, a lot of time spent away from, from our families and stuff to, to get it to this point, so, appreciate that.
Appreciate the ordinance committee working hard with us on it too, Trey, thank you.
Got one more question. Uh, on the older money, we went from forty-three thousand to eighty thousand, what, what, what did we increase? And we're taking that out of, uh, compensation money instead of general fund? Correct?
It's going to older.
Okay. I'm just asking the question.
It is going to older, yes.
There, there are a few things on here just to add to that, so we, again, we asked some of those same questions, um, and I know we're asking them tonight again. But, for example, the pond, um, Oldham Reserve Pond Removal, um, just for your knowledge, um, that's supposed to be, uh, for this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year, and then that will reduce to, correct me if I'm wrong, about twelve thousand dollars a year. Um, so that one's going to just kind of be a one-time thing. Um, we ask a lot of questions about that one specifically. And then, um, same thing that you had asked Tad about the, uh, the older, uh, payment going up some.
What's the increase, I mean, what, what made it increase, can you tell me that?
Sure, um, and maybe David could speak to that if, if he'd like, but, um, come, come forward, you could speak to it better than I can.
Good evening, um, and I don't have that exact number right in front of me, uh, right now, but the, the changes in the older budget were occurring because of, as Trey had mentioned, the pond five mitigation. The estimates for the pond five mitigation and construction of pond five, the, the estimates that we had gotten were two to three years old. Um, so, of course, the, due to the time that it changed, then costs had gone up, and so that had, uh, been part of that. The other part was that for staffing, um, and for some of the other costs over the course of the year, most of these are one-time expenses that are, uh, related to permitting, um, had just adjusted the budget, uh, that way. So, just as he had mentioned, that big hit for the pond five construction will just be a one-time fee. That should all be spent by December of this year, and then they'll, we'll start, uh, we'll have a, I think it's a ten-year period of monitoring, uh, where the cost of the monitoring would be approximately twelve thousand dollars a year, so that, that would be significantly lower.
That will result in some credits for us?
That's correct, so in, uh, for any-
It's not just lost money to a pond, we actually get some benefits out of those.
That is right, so, uh, because of the construction of the pond and the mitigation efforts around it, we will generate credits that we'll be able to use to, uh, incent businesses to come into the park. So, uh, areas of the park are designated to be protected, um, and any impact on sites, uh, that are getting built on will require mitigation efforts, so we will have a bank of credits that we'll be able to use, uh, to help negotiate and help those people come into the park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since-
How long has Heather been with us?
Since two thousand thirteen.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Four years. What is the part-time for public works? I see overtime, so I assume that's the men that have to do overtime, but what's the part-time?
Heather will be coming up to administration full-time.
So they're going to hire somebody?
So they're going to, Cory would like to hire a part-time.
That makes sense. Uh, didn't we just hire two new people?
For public works?
No, two new people.
For administration, yes.
Yeah, for administration, we hired two new people.
One's for administration and one is for the bus, because Sue will be retiring
Yeah, a new Sue.
at the end of this month.
So, the city bus, the sixty-four thousand, is that including the salaries or, no? Is that the salary for one of the workers, or is that back to you?
The, um, in the special appropriations, that's what the city gives to the bus for operations.
Yeah, I've got that on special appropriations, I wonder, where is she, the one that we just hired for, where is she?
Right now, she's under administration.
No. What's her name?
Katie.
Where is she on?
But she's not going to be on the new, in the new budget, she's going to be totally under the bus budget.
So is it included in the sixty-four thousand, her salary?
No.
That's not the total bus budget, there's other revenues that come in for the bus.
Administration's only got three people, so where is she, where is she?
She's under the bus.
Okay.
She's literally going to be under the bus. Okay, look at the bus budget. Ordnance, we're going, it's coming up.
That's going to be a separate ordinance.
Yeah, it's a separate ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we're, okay.
Joe, is, uh, since Sue's retiring, and someone had said she's going to be working at, for the Works Department part-time, so she'll go on Cory's budget, correct?
Aye.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
Thirty-five thousand, starting out, just hadn't been working but a couple of months, that's very doggone good salary. Is she running a bus situation at all? She got experience and all that?
She, she has experience in, in, um, running an office, running-
Human resources.
Yeah, human resources.
Like I said, I wish I had worked for the city. Uh, yeah, other county dude, teachers do, everybody works in the greens, I wish they were.
That's all the questions, we'll call for the, all the questions on this, we'll, we'll have a roll call, we'll call for the question.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Ready?
We ready for...
Number four.
We're ready for the second reading, Ordinance Four, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Joe. Commonwealth Kentucky, City of LaGrange, Ordinance Number Four, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky Annual Municipal Road Aid Fund for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Whereas an annual budget for the Municipal Road Aid Fund proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the City Council of LaGrange, Kentucky, and whereas the City Council has reviewed such budget proposal and accepted same as presented, now therefore be it ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the annual budget for Municipal Road Aid Fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, aid money, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, surplus, one hundred and ten thousand, total, two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Expenses, street paving, one hundred and forty-one thousand, utility cut repair, ten thousand, sidewalks, fifteen thousand, snow removal, fifty thousand. New equipment for street maintenance, fifty thousand, total, two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Section two, introduced, seconded, and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body held on June four, two thousand eighteen, after first reading held on May seven, two thousand eighteen. Signed by the Mayor of the City of LaGrange, tested by the City Clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage approval and publication according to law, and shall continue until amended or until June thirty, two thousand nineteen, whichever should first occur.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve Ordinance Number Four dash twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Trey.
Second.
Thank you, Debbie. Motion going to public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing.
Ted, second, thank you, Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now in public hearing, anybody wanna come forward on Ordinance Four, twenty eighteen, municipal road aid? Questions? Nobody? Motion go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We now have discussion by the council. Questions on the municipal road aid? Pretty self-explanatory. No question, we'll call, we'll call for the question.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you. Steve, second reading in Ordinance Five, twenty eighteen?
Thank you. Commonwealth Kentucky, City of LaGrange, Ordinance Number Five, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky Annual City Bus Budget for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Whereas an annual city bus budget has been prepared and delivered to the City Council of LaGrange, Kentucky, and whereas the City Council has reviewed such budget and accepted same as presented, now therefore be it ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the annual city bus budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, is hereby adopted as follows. Expenses, operating salaries, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, seventy cents. FICA, five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine and two cents. Vehicle insurance, three thousand, five forty-one and twenty-one cents. Medicare, one thousand, two hundred and ten and fifty-nine cents. Maintenance vehicles, five thousand. Fuel, sixteen thousand, five hundred. Tires, two thousand, six hundred. Fees, supplies, nine hundred and fifty. Postage and telephone, three thousand, two hundred. Drug tests, five hundred. Ads and printing, three thousand, nine seventy and twenty-one cents. Background check, two hundred and twenty dollars. Administrative salary, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty. Retirement, seven thousand, five ninety-five and thirty-two cents. Grand total on expenses, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, four sixty-five and five cents. Contributions, city, sixty-four thousand, six fifty-nine and eighty-four cents. County, twenty thousand. Two thousand and twelve JARC grant, three thousand, nine seventy and twenty-one cents. Revenues, TARC, three, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five. Bus fares, nine thousand, six hundred. Grand total on contributions and revenues, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five and five cents. Section two, introduced, seconded, and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body held on June four, two thousand eighteen, after first reading held on May seven, two thousand eighteen. Signed by the Mayor of the City of LaGrange, attested by the City Clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage approval and publication according to law, and shall continue until amended or until June thirty, two thousand nineteen, whichever should first occur.
Thank you, Steve. Motion?
Motion to approve Ordinance Number Five dash twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Trey. Thank you, Debbie. Motion going to public hearing?
Motion for public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wanna come forward on, questions on the Ordinance Five, twenty eighteen?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Thank you, Trey. Thank you, Debbie, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion by the council? No, we haven't. There's a lot of people that can barely pay what they're...
There's a lot of people that most certainly can, because I wrote it several days a week when I couldn't drive it, and a lot of the people who wrote it even agreed with me. Uh, I went on and paid a dollar every time. I didn't pay, what was it, fifty cents that, and there might be some. I did see maybe a couple that probably could not afford to pay seventy-five cents or a dollar. But most of them could, and most of them agreed. Not all of them, but most of them did. I mean, just an idea, that's awful cheap. What do they charge, fifty cents each time they get on? For senior?
I personally think the bus should be free. It's, it's such a small portion of the revenue, I think, why not make it free and take more cars off the road?
I would do, if we didn't have to pay sixty-four thousand, no. Right, grand total on expenses is a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. Yeah, I would say it would be free too, if it didn't have so much expense. Could you agree?
Yeah, we knew...
There's probably a way that you can let people that absolutely could not afford it get off. There's a lot of them that can't afford it.
We knew it wasn't gonna be money-making when we took it on, and we don't, probably never break even on it, so... It's a service to our city, it's LaGrange. Some of them can't get to Dallas, it's to the hospital, anywhere else that wasn't for the service. So, I'm well pleased with what we're doing for it.
Very, very important thing, it's important speaking. Also, I'm not saying that...
We did talk about advertising on the side of the bus and inside the bus, possibly, to help with the expense. We, we did, right, we did talk about that when we were going over this ordinance specifically, or this budget specifically. I don't know if, I can't say that we didn't, we as the ordinance can, our ordinance committee can dictate that. That would come from... I'm bringing it to you now, just to let you know.
Bringing it now?
Yeah, that that was part of...
Is it cost-effective?
I know we had talked about, when we had re, well, I say we, when the city had rebranded the bus, looking at some possible options of either having on the siding or in the back. And I know there was some work done on that, but we did, I don't know what the cost is exactly as far as the inside. I don't think we had talked about that. I know that TARC, for example, does that. And obviously, Powerball is a big advertiser on the sides of their buses, so it must work for them.
It's an election year. People could put their ads on there.
Right. So, it wa, it was something that we, we had discussed some in committee, just to bring that back up.
Okay. Discussion, call for the question? Roll call?
Stephanie?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean? Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad? Six to zero.
Thank you. Ready for six, twenty eighteen, Steve, please?
Thank you. Commonwealth Kentucky, City of LaGrange, Ordinance Number Six, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky Alcohol Regulatory Fees Budget for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Whereas an annual budget for the alcohol regulatory fees has been prepared and delivered to the City Council of LaGrange, Kentucky, and whereas the City Council has reviewed such budget proposal and accepted same as presented, now therefore be it ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the annual budget for alcohol regulatory fees for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, is hereby adopted as follows. Expenses, full-time salaries, two hundred and seventeen, eight thirty and thirty-four cents. Part-time salaries, eleven thousand, one sixteen and five cents. Overtime salaries, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Employee health insurance, sixty-one thousand, one seventy and sixty-four cents. Employer FICA, fifteen thousand, eight sixty-seven and twenty-two cents. Employer Medicare, three thousand, seven forty and four cents. Employer portion retirement, sixty-six thousand, one twenty. Workers' comp, nine thousand, eight seventy-four and forty-eight cents. Auto insurance, nine thousand, five thirty-three and twenty-three cents. Liability insurance, eleven thousand, five fifty-eight and sixty-eight cents. Computer maintenance, three thousand. Seminars, education, two thousand. Uniforms, two thousand. Criminal investigation, one thousand. Equipment over three hundred, twenty-nine thousand. Radio maintenance, twenty-six thousand. Total on expenses, four seventy-eight, five sixty and sixty-eight cents. Revenues, fees and tax collections on alcohol, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five sixty and sixty-eight cents. Total on revenues, four seventy-eight, five sixty and sixty-eight cents. Section two, introduced, seconded, and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body held on June four, two thousand eighteen, after first reading held on May seven, two thousand eighteen. Signed by the Mayor of the City of LaGrange, attested by the City Clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage approval and publication according to law, and shall continue until amended or until June thirty, two thousand, I believe that should be nineteen, whichever should first occur.
Motion to approve Ordinance Number Sixteen dash twenty eighteen.
Second.
Thank you, motion for public hearing?
Motion for public hearing.
Anne? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing? Anyone wanna come forward? Motion out of public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion by the council on Ordinance Six, twenty eighteen?
If I read it right, you're gonna hire somebody at a hundred thousand dollars a year? Is that correct?
Where you read that?
Well, it says full-time, full-time salary, I would see sixty-five thousand. Then, then you got health insurance, retirement, that's another thirty thousand.
This is the same as every year, it's just a twenty-five percent of my budget. So you take it, instead of using all the city taxpayers' money, the regulatory and tax fees can be used towards the police department. And we raised it at, at the, excuse, my voice is going, but at the suggestion of the auditors, we increased it this year. So that's not one salary, that's a portion of our total salaries. It's just coming out of the regulatory fees, the same thing with the FICA and everything else. It's a portion of our overall budget being used for the alcohol regulatory fees, which allows us to do a lot of things we couldn't do without it, like providing more services and equipment, and some of the equipment, example, the radio, we're up at the, Old County Dispatch is upgrading their radio system. And, believe it or not, it sounds, gonna sound ridiculous when I tell you this, but one portable radio for the new system is three thousand dollars. If it wasn't for the alcohol, we wouldn't be able to afford that, we'd be begging you all for more money, but a portion of it being paid the alcohol fee, because a big chunk of our activity is alcohol-related. So, you know, that's, you know, that's just where we're at. So it's not one person, it's an overall percentage of the budget, like it has every year since two thousand and thirteen, when we went...
On the back.
Wet.
Thanks.
That's, that's broken down in the back of your budget.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
On the, huh?
That's what I'm getting ready to look at, thank you.
Yeah. Send back the budget, all the alcohol regulatory fees, and shows a twenty-five percent, which is the amount of this, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, that's going into the police budget. So, any more questions? Call for the question?
Stephanie? Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you. Steve, we ready for seven, twenty eighteen, please?
Thank you. Commonwealth Kentucky, City of LaGrange, Ordinance Number Seven, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky Annual Stormwater MS Four for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Whereas an annual budget for the stormwater MS Four proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the City Council of LaGrange, Kentucky, and whereas the City Council has reviewed such budget proposal and accepted same as presented, now therefore be it ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the annual budget for the stormwater MS Four for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, one hundred thousand. Surplus, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six fifty-seven. Total, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six fifty-seven. Expenses, full-time salary, sixty-five thousand. FICA, four thousand, thirty. Medicare, nine hundred and forty-three. Health insurance, sixteen thousand. Retirement, thirteen thousand, nine sixty-two. Capital improvement, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven twenty-two. Total, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six fifty-seven. Section two, introduced, seconded, and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body held on June four, two thousand eighteen, after first reading held on May seven, two thousand eighteen. Signed by the Mayor of the City of LaGrange, attested by the City Clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage approval and publication according to law, and shall continue until amended or until June thirty, two thousand nineteen, whichever should first occur.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve Ordinance Number Seven dash twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Trey.
I per, or second.
Thank you, Anne. Motion for public hearing?
Motion for public hearing.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing? No one? Motion go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion by the council on Ordinance Seven, twenty eighteen? This is strictly the money we get from stormwater. We are a co-permittee for the, under the county. So they're giving us twenty-five thousand dollars a quarter, which amounts to a hundred thousand dollars a year. Fiscal court is, for how the stormwater. First time and sec, second time, it's the second time we've adopted this, or second time, second year in stormwater. So we went for years from two thousand eleven, I guess. And never saw a penny. So this is fantastic, after the county took over the stormwater program. So is any questions? Not, we'll call for the question?
Stephanie?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean? Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you. Old business.
Do you want to say, so from the last meeting, we did discuss the light progress at fifty-three and one forty-six, and you did provide a update? Did that's out for a fourth bid? Is it about planning and zoning specifically, or is it by someone else, should I say?
What's it for, Trey?
The, the light at the, at the current flashing four-way stop.
The, uh, the, for the traffic signal? And you want to update on it?
You had provided an update, just letting us know that it was out for a fourth bid.
For a bid, yeah, yeah. As far as I know, it's still out.
Yeah.
I think it's in the fourth bid, and the third time they sent a bid out, they didn't even get a response on it. So the next bid's gone out, my understanding, and it's for, you know, the deputy pole, the arm coming out instead of the plain old silver poles on each corners with the lines coming down for the traffic signal. So we're still waiting.
I, I think we'd all, both city residents and those that have to go through that intersection would love to have that expedited. I don't, I don't know exactly how to make that happen other than to ask.
I would, I would think, I'm getting my information from Jim Urban, if you'd like to speak with him and maybe see what he tells you, or would that be correct, Steve, under your...
That's, that's a great place to start.
That's where I was... District five, probably Kentucky Transportation is, I'm, I'm sure they're sending out the bids.
Just, you know, since school's gonna be out soon, traffic's gonna increase, and, you know, going into the summer months, so it's, uh... Right, and it's, it's, it's a rough spot to, to go through at times.
Kind of excited to see how rough it's gonna be when the traffic scene goes up.
Hopefully it's better.
But that's okay, it's going, I'm sure it's going now.
Thank you for the update, by the way, that's what I wanted to say, so...
Anything else on our old business? What you got on our new business, Jean? I'll let you go. We're gonna have booths, like we always do. Well, we got a ton of, ton of stuff that you saw on that list, to give stuff away. You're not gonna believe what we got to give away, we got... Yeah.
We used to get water for people and stuff like that.
We can do that. Okay, under, uh, under new business, we have a resolution that we need to adopt. Uh, Steve, if you'd like to read that?
Thank you. City of LaGrange, Kentucky Resolution Four, Series Two thousand and eighteen. Does everybody have a copy of that in your packet? I have extra copies if you need it. A resolution adopting the text of county stormwater ordinance. Whereas the City of LaGrange has the authority pursuant to the provisions of KRS Chapter eighty-two point zero eight-two and other applicable law to adopt resolutions. And whereas Oldham County has enacted and ordained certain ordinances affecting stormwater water quality, municipal separate storm sewer system MS Four Phase Two program, pollutants and sediment, and discharges into streams and waterways. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, one, that Oldham County Ordinance Number sixteen dash six one zero dash two four eight is hereby adopted by reference. And it is attached here too as an exhibit and is fully incorporated as if set out in its entirety herein. Two, enforcement of the terms of this ordinance within the city limits will be the responsibility of the city.
That's it? We got a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Four, Series twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tad. Uh, discussion, what, what we realized? We, when we went with the co-permittee on the, with the county, and we signed a agreement with the stormwater board, but we realized that we really hadn't had a resolution to adopt the stormwater ordinance. So that's what this is about. And we can, if we adopt that by resolution, we can enforce it within our city. Is that correct, Stephanie? So we got it right? Thank you. So that's, that's what this is all about. Do you have something to say, Jean?
No, I'm sorry.
Motion for public hearing, or public comment?
So we got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Any other new business?
Just, Ann's the only one here from the ordinance committee meeting at this point. This is June fourteenth. I know this next week, but is that, uh... Work, that's Thursday.
Um, it would be hard to get there before six-thirty.
Okay, how about Monday the eighteenth?
I'm out of town that week.
Okay.
I can take a month off.
Okay.
The... I know we don't like to push them that la- that week right before we meet, but... I mean, the week of the twenty-fifth. I could meet that Tuesday the twenty-sixth or Thursday the twenty-eighth.
Okay. How about Thursday the twenty-eighth?
Okay.
Six twenty-eight, um, I think, I think we've been meeting at six, I'm sorry, going off memory. Um, I think it's at six is what we've been...
What date y'all setting?
Six twenty-eight.
Okay, we'll be in conference. I think one of your ordinance committee media, uh, members are going, is going also.
Okay. How about I try to send out an email and see solicit a date that will work? Um, and maybe, I know that a lot of folks come on vacation, um, so we may have to postpone a June meeting to July, but...
I mean, and just for reference, uh, Wednesday the thirteenth is fine. Monday... The eleventh would probably be fine.
Okay. How about Monday the eleventh, so that'll give us a week from today? And I'll send out the email to the other two committee members, all are welcome to attend, as always.
Monday the eleventh, six...
Six o'clock.
We don't usually know till we get there.
Monday eleventh at six P.M.?
Yes.
Sometimes we don't know, until we get there.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, at City Hall.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Motion to go into executive session?
Just so we have it on the record, we're going into executive session under KRS sixty-one point eight one zero subsection one C as well as subsection one G. One C is to discuss proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency. One G is to discuss a specific proposal. Open discussions would jeopardize the citing, retention, expansion or upgrading of a business. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, somebody's gotta have that honor.
And I'm an animal lover, I remember when you sang, you know, singing.
Oh.
That's where I'm at, he told me.
If you don't, he goes and locks us up.
You know, it's, I'm sure you don't have. I think these kids. I think. Well, they say, yeah. And it's not hard. He's the. He has. Oh. He's.
Yeah, it's good, that's what he needs.
You know, I played one hand on this scanner when they came to Christmas. What do we call them now? And I trusted scanner, but it was super right there. And I feel like you all see more than, you know, you go, yeah, this tornado's coming. We don't like those Chinese things. It never even. We don't like those Chinese things.
And he started saying.
Will we pick anything up? No. Will we pick anything up? I'm not gonna do it, but I'm not gonna do it all. Yes. And if somebody, you try and tell you, you have to come do it for. For me, I'm just mortified to think. That people elected. There are. Does he have any luck?
Why do you start from the big three?
I can issue a license, it doesn't say. It's a license, and look forward to it. So there's license somehow. That's what I'm telling it, yeah.
Definitely said stop, I don't need no more. And she is your grandpa. Because I mean, I made.
It's changed a lot, hasn't it?
And then he happens to find the sound, and I don't know, like, we punch up now. I was very. He's so miserable. It's a boy like this, and you go down, you go through the hole, and you go like him out of there. No, his son. His handicap. And I, I mean, you can't, he's pitiful, but you have a thing in here right now. Each is pitiful, but he's bitter. Yeah, I mean, the chair in the middle will not walk around. But he's got more. And we, and we. I walk there, I don't think I've done more good.
Well, unless, please go down that drug house down the street.
Have you been down that, down that house like?
Yes, she's really doing it. She's part of that, he's gone in there and he's.
If we were to leave.
Yes, like you shut her on.
I like.
No, they're still running, they're still trying to run it, but I tell her next time, you can make sure you get a bad house check on runners.
And you know the people live there, they're on the street.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I haven't had no trouble with him. I don't believe it. I don't know why, I don't know, you know, it's.
Backyard a little bit, but no, they seem to be, you know, they go themselves, like.
Yeah, I mean, I had to, and I can't have no help over the void, it stays in jail.
Well, he gets, he lives in the center.
Does he? I had to.
Because he works, he works for.
Oh, the trees are pretty good.
Good, tell me, oh, so he's true, but now. Don't step down, and then that, and then would, a friend told us.
They say he's really good.
Well, I.
They say when he stays down there, when he stays somewhere, he says I tricked her.
Well, I'm a big guy, he's a ride, he does some jerk, oh, he is, if you don't know. Uh, he said he was a wonderful kid, and we were in here right now. But you don't like him, he put all his cares out, he's no rookie.
He stayed with the group.
Well, then. And saying. Do you know, some people say you need to move. I mean, I didn't really get, I tried, I had a couple of times, but. Then they drew up.
I had to call a customer, my neighbor's a couple of times. It's like, there's times when I can count.
I mean, you know, it's not, you know, he's favorite, he's not, we get a call in the morning, so I haven't ever been very mad, I've had some. Maybe they should be watching out for a bit. There are others up. It's definitely.
Nah, it was an accident, it's not a dog.
Yeah.
It's a weldy, weldy rod.
They go, who's that? You're.
That's because he gets in the car, so I don't think he.
Oh, my, my. He's got it. And she, she said, no one happened in the ranch, and I can't say no one. She said, please. Up there, and I was around, it was the corner. She said, that's the name of the park, and she says, I don't. They got it. So, so that's a great deal, to say. She says, stop the cops. And they're just talking. They're money, and, um, and she told me, she said, no, they don't. But she's a liberty. She has a liberty, and I do want to. You know, makes it.
Okay, so we could be able to.
So, we just have to, okay, so we'll need to know which one you want.
Yeah, just tell me they wouldn't let you on, we'll. Yeah, I'll show you what to do.
Yes, it's just the one down in our district, so.
The ones are perfect, and I'll be the other day, she told me, I'm supposed to work a couple hours a day, I'm down there ten hours a day. I keep seeing long days, it'll be okay, and I'm still a man. No, at least there's.
Because your job's long enough. You can, you can cut the grass misty.
Yes.
Tell you, this refrigerator.
Well, and then it's, and it's bad because I'm trying to clean up the business licensing process and.
She said, Adrian's really was.
Two hundred. Two hundred. On Thursday.
Today, everybody got their.
In the phone right now.
Every call that.
I think you'd be surprised.
Can I speak to Stephanie?
Plus, that's one give her.
All the calls. Yeah, and I'd be on the phone, and while I'm on the phone, I have three voicemails. So I'm trying to listen to my voicemails, and then the calls coming through, and then some, finally, some people read Spartan or email, which is great, because then I can answer that while I'm on the call.
I told Katie, she came to this one, she said, you're gonna get a lot of calls today? And it won't be for Stephanie, and I can't tell you. If I go to the station, she has something, I'm not kidding.
I had one guy call me to argue with me, because he had a new business in the ranch. And he wanted to argue with me about it, because we don't work out there. Okay, then just send me an email. No, I'm telling you on the phone, okay, I want it in writing, send me email. No, you're gonna have to just accept it on the phone. Do whatever, just send me another way, be whatever, so I can have it up. So then I looked him up, and I thought, I caught him working in the city, so I called Max, and I caught you working in the city without license. You activated, so you don't have a choice. Where was it? So I told him where, what time, what date, the whole bit. He's talking to somebody, and I said, oh, I was over there visiting a friend. You would think if you were a code enforcer, you'd do a better job, get out of your car once in a while, and go find out where we're working. I said, you had all your equipment laying on the ground, and I looked track, it looks to me like somebody's working. I said, but you know, if you were visiting a friend, that's fine, I'll disregard this. So even as later he calls me back, I'm not talking, I'm gonna get done, so I let it go to voicemail. Oh, you were right, I'm sorry, I was working the job over there, I'll be in there.
So Katie had, what, got thirty minutes?
So then he came in and paid it.
Well, at least he was cute.
Well, and he was, and he was, and when he came in, he was very nice, because he was rude on the phone, but he was a very nice person.
But you know, it's just like I came over to pay too. I, I don't want nothing for free, but I don't want somebody taking me.
No, no. You're not getting anything for free, you're gonna pay the next time you run the show.
Oh, yeah, I know. Well, see, that's. Now, now, one day, I had quarters in my pocket, so I don't know deals, and it come like. He said, well, you're gonna have to get honey, honey, on the bus. So I was like, I'd like to be Donald's or somewhere.
Who said that's you?
The new bus driver, the man you got. And. You, for you.
You know Hugh. The man that would protect his personality.
I'll tell him that.
He's dangerous, you're dead.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, his first, his first. I can't remember which question, like, he did, he said something about. Like, the third word I've heard is quite good, very. Maggie said that. And I didn't hear nothing every. They hit it, hit it her and then Tom, and I said, don't even think after you're there, because I got the all, so I can use that word. He's, he's okay, but he's fucking wrong down.
I lost it when he, uh, wouldn't make out.
Oh, he, he goes down.
Would not, he got over the watch. You know, we didn't have a plan on that, because we were on there right now. We break, and everything's done, and one day, he's. And, and then, oh, he didn't get. Yeah, and she go, we had to wait in my house, and that lady, that's gonna clean up all. He's going, oh, he, he would not have this now. I was doing nothing, now that I'm here, I'm like, so I did good, you know, I'll pay you. And he is just.
I mean, I just don't know how it worked, but she did not. Is that what it is, she was a hollerer in the interview? I know I'm very, I'm the way I know.
She tells you, she was, she was not talking. She tells you. Yeah, that's what she said.
And now that I know her, I can't believe she was so quiet.
You say?
The truth.
And you should say, you'd say.
She's, she's got a lot to say, and she'll say it when she wants to say it.
Not to, she's a man of God, God's gonna say.
I have a brother, you guys can. You know, I can't, February was my only day to sleep. Well, no, I'm thinking, I sleep until seven thirty, but then I lay there, and we. You told me something quiet, and my kids aren't.
I had to guess. I wish that would be come in four years. Because I was so happy I could wear my contacts, I had. I wore, do one more, I would just.
You can check what you're doing.
He wants me to. Way off of it, so I decided I'll do contact, I'll be glasses in the morning, and then definitely if I go home, that could, I can put the contacts in. We don't, I was.
Is it closing, or something in your eye?
Like I would.
Take it out, and then.
He didn't say that last year. He said, how did that happen? I said, oh, why? I wasn't getting that one when I woke up. So, Bill. Morning, you're not, you can't. They, they take it, they kind of move down, it's kind of like, well, they're not making out. And she takes care of that, so even that's also a. Idea. I mean, he said, I don't even know, they have me. I said, I hate those. They do have a birthday.
Oh, no. That was the day she didn't pick up my birthday cake, oh, man. And then she won't even take any gas money from me.
No, I mean, I. I can't, but I think I would just eat a little bit of like.
All that extra money for gas?
I didn't know it was hanging, I knew last Friday, but too much. Yeah, well, they had, yeah, it did, yes, and it smelled, and then it tasted, and I wish I could prove that I didn't.
I think.
But I think he's.
They're a little forward. Probably about thirty.
Those TVs I bought, probably gets every lot, how they don't do anything, I want them to be a paper bag. I couldn't even feel it.
Did you leave that on the counter for a while?
I haven't had them there all month.
Oh.
Oh, nothing happened.
Strange.
She was.
Yeah, they kept six, those are way so shell, and I think.
When they're, when they're high. Don't get my data, excuse me, the seat's bigger than that.
Yeah, I was touching it. You know how you do the soft finish. Old lady down the. That's the way you.
I'm a kind of.
And I, I sit there all morning, and he's, he's having. Behind the tower, and I just saw. He's at the little school. And I was in those schools, and I, I. But I couldn't do it to that part of the scene, he just.
I can't take the whole thing inside.
I don't want to get something either.
No, no, you deal along in this license, so you can save the whole thing.
Yeah. Or that's the way I want it, because I would. So next year, when Hostie's. I get it, it's not on that. Can I just drop it down? Choice of man.
Chain box, with the whole time, mail box.
Yeah, I want to. Oh, I like that. But they get these on their birth, like, they told me, they said, let's go, face it, we need it. And I grabbed it out, they said, now where you gonna go? You need this to say.
It's my head, like, all the time, and then you make my drug bust. Isn't that very.
Tell me, tell me.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry.
Tell me, tell me, Tony, if you. Me, actually, I, I did candy, the first thing's a good idea. Some of them not agree.
It's such a real person.
But he told you a story.
But I'll.
Moves the signs, they have to come into a different pot, and maybe it's painting this Christmas. He said, he said that maybe they have, they're like, we have to go bless all these. And they, they saw the signs, and they were like.
Oh, my God. It's not a contest, it's not a.
Yeah, Tony was just a great guy, that was so hard.
You know, we, we spent a while, we worked out a couple people. He always ran, he came out. For twenty-five years. Training all along, so he was about to. On the first.
Or the flowers.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, awesome. Name of. Oh, yeah. He went to, he went to.
Smile.
Major. Journey. So he went to. His wife, and he kept. Tony, you told me. He wasn't going to die when she was. He went to, he went to the R, and he said, you need to go home, and I'm like, I'm calling this. He said, two of them. He signed on the basketball, and he skipped that place, he pitched him, he pushed him, he picked that side. The doctor went to here for thirty minutes, four months, and he was full of muscle. He was totally.
He was the, the agent charged with C A unit for this whole area, but he was one of those, he was like, Frank, he was a real person. Hit last down the job, I told the story, they were down in Bowling Green doing a raid or something. And so they're, after it's all over, they're all coming out here, because Tony's got his two guns on his hips, and he struts out, and he was out there in, in with the guys.
He was agent charged for doing stuff that, you know, everybody else, but he was a super. So he retired, like, a month out of retirement, all of it, just ten, I'm like, hey, I won't take it, I think I'm going to go there, because it's gonna, I'm gonna be done, who's paying for it? I don't know, I'm never.
I'm like, you sort of, it's not as real as that.
Do you agree?
Guess that's a no.
Would you help us? Is he a police officer?
My husband, yeah, he works for the federal government.
I got the cops, and she said, he's easy, he do like that he's neat.
Yeah, I didn't like it, I just don't love it.
I wish you could get it off.
Wow, it was L A we get it on.
And I bet the ones that done the best, like, with me, I bet you.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. He's not for long. We have a cousin who can't stay out of prison, because he likes to manufacture men, so. I wish he'd just stay in prison, because that's the safest place for him. I wish he'd just stay in prison, because that's the safest place to learn.
And it said, do you want to, uh, stuff, because tomorrow I want to turn in, it's a bad form, and it's diabetic. So you don't really know how it's going, what, nothing, nothing.
Right.
Something is probably so outdated, now, if you said, oh, I'm diabetic, and that's what I pay. He plays some. He's not good now.
About two years, so they, they broke in the right, and they looked, pulled the liquor off the wall. She was like, left on the lawn, and broke, I turned up in the back, and then they, all this went out, and he was trying to, he was saying. He, uh, finally got, I think the forest, because it's actually locked, and they were broken in. He made it, and about the time, I guess, they got here before the video, it was a war apartment, it's shining light, it's good. He's great, he too, because he had. He doesn't have no. But they stole it with a blood pressure, so how do you expect? So we told him, that's all they got, they'd be no narcotics. Narcotics in the safe, they could. So whatever it was, it was from blood pressure, and we told everybody, I said. You guys sometimes get Rubik's balls, and likes to N S P a lot. They, they said, like, oh, six thousand hydro appears, and they're going blood pressure, and all of it, moves there, they walk the same.
My neighbor, she's been, she's forty-something years old, and she lived with her mom. And I gave her, she was singing, instead of the, a poem, moving them to somebody. Because she just moved back in, mom just got up, put some bundles, her own trip out. She couldn't be back in, but that's what I'd say, but she came home one day, she knew I had all my surgery. I'm a gentleman, so. Do you need your phone?
It's staying, people have their own home phones.
Our cell phones.
Our cell phone is something.
Yeah.
And I have some on you, and once you get up. I'm high. And she said, I just have. She says, can I have one of your pain pills? Uh, and then she started handing you, asking something. I said, they didn't give me none, they told me if I had none over the counter, didn't help, to get something like money back to the hospital. What's something's the matter? And she said, okay, it's a five hundred.
That was a good way to handle it, otherwise we'll break in later, get around something.
Damn.
We had friends that, back in the seventies, they were truck drivers, and back then, you know, they switched drugs all the time. And so there's one, back in, taking his film, and suddenly he picked it off the top. He was learning. And so he finally looked up what he was taking, and it was whatever women were given after childbirth to make sure that they, their blood supply. So he had been taking this blood clotting agent. It's a good thing he did, and killing, but he kept taking more, he kept getting what it was doing, so he just take more. I think when he did look to the right old age, but.
Well, she even went over to Debbie's. Debbie's mom's one day, and Cat comes home, this was out, we had a number medication. She said, Cat, I like Susan Craig, I'm a medicine. And she was from Craig Madison, just like, I had orange in my name, and I had my orange. Scootos, or whatever the call name.
Just goes to show that, you know, being smarter, just because we get all these things. He's very long, though, surprising me. Um, we went down there for change of graduation, I wasn't fully sure. Having an eighteen-year-old son is not a good thing. But they're way on a cruise right now.
I can't even breathe as I go down. We went three hour, we were watching Dolphins from San Diego, and she was sitting three hours there, it's like, this is lower.
They were charging us.
Yeah, I said, and if we only went up three times. If we do, me and my daughter wants to take your grand. Um, I mean, I don't know. Like, hey, I said, I know what I'm listening to, because I've been on a boat, you haven't been on a boat? No, I've got to be half hour.
She can still save the money.
I know. If you can ever get on her boat yet. Um.
I got a thing that.
Your rest is worth being in.
They were selling in the shop. I saw them, my daughter bolted grand. She was that, she was scared, but she was, like, I would be a little scared.
And nauseated, yeah.
But you don't, it's me, I do not take medication, like, I can see, like, you have to count it. This is over the count, all it's gonna do is settle your stomach. There if I found, thank you, you know, I'm really, really sick, and it might be, as for one of you ladies, nagging on, running her home.
The only thing, the only thing I had on my daughter, dude, was God, God. Probably thirty.
I don't know.
Went off, off hand, off, off hand, cleaning this man. He was real rude, and not just supposed to carry him in the aisle, but he was sick from a weather, he was so sick, that he was laying down, and then couldn't put down. He was such a jerk, so I always said, I gotta be sleeping.
Did y'all see any doctors?
I was all torn up.
Me either.
A couple of windows.
Bring them out, and they'll come out, actually, with the. While New Jersey, I'm sure, me and my mom and baby, and they would jump together. And they were just like me, but just both of you all the way. Well, they didn't wipe their own palms. Well, they sit up in.
Party's over.
There's a laugh, they said, well, I'm gonna tell you.
Oh, the party's ready.
We're having our own, gonna come to back here.
Give drinks and cheese, doctor?
Motion to go out of executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, thank you.
Please make a motion to have a written disposal of property.
Thank you. Written determination for disposal of personal property, whereas Kentucky revised statute K R S eight two point zero eight three states in pertinent part, a city may sell or otherwise dispose of any of its real or personal property. Two, before selling or otherwise disposing of any real or personal property, the city shall make a written determination setting forth and fully describing. A, the real or personal property, B, its intended use at the time of acquisition, C, the reasons why it is in the public interest to dispose of it, and D, the method of disposition to be used. Therefore, the following written determination is hereby set forth and made. A, the city owns certain personal property, specifically excess filled dirt on the Oldham Reserve property in La Grange, Kentucky. Although this was originally real property, the dirt has now been severed from the property and is useful as personal property. B, the city intended to use the property for fill on the Oldham Reserve site at the time of acquisition, and most of the remaining property will in fact be used for that purpose. C, it is in the public interest to dispose of this property, transferring this property will afford the city an economic development opportunity. As a business is improving, a separate property for site development, and there will be an increased basis in the tax base as a result of these improvements. The improvements are not economically feasible without this transfer. D, the city will transfer this property for one dollar. This written determination is hereby adopted as true by the mayor and city council of the city of La Grange, Kentucky.
Thank you, Steve. We take a vote? Discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries for the rest.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.